Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the St. Peter School Board. It is Monday, June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We are at the St. Peter Community Center Governor's Room. First item of business is to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to consider and adopt the agenda before you in the board book, online on the board book and in the packet in front of you.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is adopted. Kimberly, any requests to speak? Next up, approval of the consent agenda items, also found in the board book, online and in the packet in front of you.
A lot of staff resignations. I saw the majority of what was that? Let me see, make sure I'm not... One thing, and what the over... Was there... Was that in the overloads? Was the overloads at North? Was that in the consent agenda?
Yes.
Do we get that for the other schools too, or...?
South didn't have any overloads.
Okay.
And North, if you take a look at that list and a little bit deeper in there, there's sometimes somebody has an overload for a number of days, maybe a week. As students come and go, we had a few classes that would get over the twenty-six or to the twenty-six, and then they would get that overload. But then, as numbers moved, it changed.
Okay. I was just curious if the others, like the middle school or high school, did they put out what, how much their overloads were at all, or...?
So, the high school would have overloads, but it's not by number of students. It's how many sections they're teaching. So, there might have been people for the semester that had an overload because they're teaching a sixth class. Where at the elementary level, it's done quarterly for how many days they were over, over the cap in the country.
Okay.
Charlie, can I ask a question about the long-term personal leave request? Missed his Engel Dinger.
Always happens to me, guys.
Question is, the Warrior Strong class, or whatever it's called?
The Mental Warriors is a club that Mr. Keeney has had, yeah.
But I was under the understanding, reading the letter also, that he was teaching a course?
It's a course that he's implemented a lot of those things into called Science of Mindset and Nutrition.
Yeah, that's it. Is that gonna be offered next year?
Nope. Nope, doing a little rearranging there. There are seniors who were, the seniors who were using that as support for science elective. There are plenty of other places for them and other schools just having to get their second choice.
Okay. And he is not resigning for taking a leave from his basketball position?
Correct, I leave just for his teaching.
That was an easier one, thank you.
I just wanted to know about the class.
Yeah, yeah. There were gonna be two sections running that, so.
Other items to discuss from the consent agenda. Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. No student spotlight or student council report tonight. Welcome to summer. We'll move into the action items. Action item number one, consider acceptance of gifts, donations and grants.
Yes, thank you to probably John Warren and Annette Engel Dinger for working with Blue Cross Blue Shield and getting this generous sponsorship of five thousand dollars for Hispanic Joy Day, which is scheduled for the fall.
Wonderful, we need to accept.
I move we accept the gift from Blue Cross Blue Shield.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
It's been very exciting to see a lot of the work in this area, and it's been very popular and I think well-liked and well-respected. And I'm just happy that we have internal champions to help move this forward.
I agree.
Excellent.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the five thousand dollar gift to help with Hispanic Joy Day from Blue Cross Blue Shield, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, consider approval of candidates for graduation. Is this Mrs. Engel Dinger again?
It is.
Yeah, the list of graduates' names that you have in front of you have all met the requirements from the state of Minnesota as well as the additional requirements from the St. Peter School Board. And it was a great graduation. Very exciting.
It was a hundred and seventy-six.
We had a hundred and seventy-six walk. There are always one or two who choose not to, which is fine too. The diploma is the most important part.
So, we have the list in front of us we need to approve. Would entertain a motion.
How many of those are from Rock Bend again?
Uh, that's excellent. They had a lot of graduates this year.
Okay.
And they, I believe they all walked, which is pretty exciting.
Wow. That's awesome.
Yeah. Nice to see them.
I move that we approve the candidates for graduation.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just one compliment to Mrs. Engel Dinger.
Oh, thank you very much. Thanks for being there.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations to the graduates. Item number three, consider approval of the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five budget. Ms. Gracia is here to talk to us.
Okay, so the four documents in front of you all look identical to what was presented to you in May. So, I'm going to go over the whole presentation again, but I'm trying, I'm going to try and speed it up just because you've already heard this information once before. If you have any questions at any point, obviously feel free to stop me. The first document that you have in front of you should be the detailed budget outlined. It's on two pages. The first page is the general fund. A reminder, the top three lines are the unassigned general funds. That's what we've been focusing a lot over the last number of months with our budget discussion. But this whole first page is the general fund. So, as you can see, going into fiscal year twenty-five, we're estimating that our unassigned general fund balance will start at three point four million. We'll have twenty-seven point one million in revenues, twenty-seven point one million in expenses, and a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars between adjustments with the restricted and assigned funds, ending us at three point two million in our unassigned general fund balance. This would leave us with a total of forty-three point five days in that unassigned general fund. The second section down are the restricted funds. So, we utilized all of those to the extent that we could in this budget. Next, we have our assigned funds. At the end of twenty-five, those assigned funds that are remaining in there are things that are dedicated to a specific project or tagged for something such as Q Comp. And then we have LTFM and operating capital at the bottom. So, our overall general fund, starting in twenty-five, will be at five point three five million, ending at four point nine six million. Any questions on the general fund before I move on? All right, moving on to the second page then, we have food service. So, we're estimating in twenty-five, we're gonna start our food service fund balance at eight hundred eighty-six thousand. We'll have one point seven seven in revenue, two point zero six nine in expenses, ending at five hundred ninety-one thousand. We are estimating that we're gonna eat into some of our food service fund balance just with the cost of food and still as we try to figure out the revenue stream with the federal and state funding and the reimbursement of meals. So, we're gonna closely watch that one and try and tighten that up, but that is our estimate at this time. Community service, Fund Four, we're looking at, starting the year with a deficit of seven hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, estimating revenue at eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, expenses at one point one million, and ending the year with a deficit of just over a million dollars. Something that we've talked about a couple of times is how we're going to, how we're going to fix this, if we have ideas for fixing Fund Balance, or Fund Four in general and/or if we're going to have to make a transfer from Fund One at some point. Our auditors have told us, made that comment a number of times, that we might have to make a transfer at some point. So, just something to keep in your mind. Debt redemption is Fund Seven, so starting at six hundred eighty-eight. This is again, this is the bonds that we already have. So, this does not factor in, which is actually Fund Six, the bond project for the middle school. So, this is our bonds that we already have. Six hundred eighty-eight thousand, three point four in revenue, three point four in expense, ending with almost a similar fund balance. The trust fund is for scholarships, and then last we have our insurance fund, starting at one point two million, revenues of four point five, expenses of four point one, ending with a fund balance of one point six six million. So, our health insurance especially, dental is doing well as well, but health insurance definitely, going self-insured was the way to go. And if our estimates are accurate, we made a very smart decision in doing that a few years ago. So, are there any questions on this first document? All right, the second page that you have is just a summarized version of that same information, so I'm not gonna go over that. The third document that you have should look like this. It's the student numbers. So, just looking at a few of the years, so fiscal year twenty-four is the year that we're wrapping up. We had estimated two thousand sixty-eight students. Just as a note, I looked last week and we were, our funding was coming in at two thousand seventy-one. So, it looks like we're coming on right on target with our estimates for twenty-four. For twenty-five, we're estimating that that number is gonna drop down to two thousand nineteen, twenty-six down to one thousand nine ninety-two, and so on and so forth. So, at this point, we are still estimating student, our student numbers are going to decrease. I will say, like I mentioned in May, that our numbers did pick up at the end of the year, which is not what traditionally has happened the last few years. Usually it decreases at the end of the year. So, hopefully those students stick around and these numbers will look better next year. But at this point, these are the numbers that we used for our revenue productions. And then the last item that you should have in your board book is our three-year rollout. So, starting with the first page, we started with our twenty-four revenue, made all of the twenty-five changes and came up to our twenty-five number. So, again, just highlighting a few of the lines that we have. I'm not gonna go over each one. The levy number is three hundred sixty-two thousand. That's known because we approved our levy last fall. We have the activities increase of about eighty thousand. That was something that we had discussed during the budgeting sessions that we had. The general education revenue is a negative twenty-seven thousand. That is a combination of the student decrease that we see as well as the increase on the student population that we still have. So, that's those two numbers combined. The special education revenue is an increase of almost four hundred thousand. So, that is in part because of cross-subsidy and as well as the shifts in staffing that we made over to ASHA as part of the budgeting process. That comes back to us through a reimbursement process from MDE and it comes back to us as special ed. So, that also factors into that large number. If you move a few more down, we have COVID funds that are expiring, so a hundred and sixty-one thousand there. We sold land in twenty-four that won't be in twenty-five, so that's a hundred eighty-four thousand. Then we also had some large, the solar grants and safety grants, that was almost a hundred thousand as well. So, that would bring us, again, this twenty-seven point one, two million would tie back to the first page that you saw. I just wanna remind you that this packet is all the unassigned general fund. So, these three roll, the three-year rollout is looking just at that. So, keep that in your head. For the expenses, we started with twenty-four, had all of our changes going into twenty-five. So, again, COVID expenses there. We are estimating a hundred and eight thousand dollar decrease in staff salary and fringe, a combination of the increases that we estimated for staff as well as the reductions or positions that we decided not to fill through the budgeting process. The Rock Bend classroom reduction, the hundred fifty-three thousand dollar decrease is for the teacher, the para, the classroom. So, those costs go into that. The district-wide supplies and materials is ninety thousand. That's a combination of all of the buildings, the DO, some maintenance. So, all areas had to pitch in to make that number. And then equipment purchases, if you move down quite a few more, is a hundred thirteen thousand. Again, has to do with the solar panels and safety grant. So, the very bottom section should match the first page that you saw. Started our twenty-five fund balance at three point four million, ending our twenty-five fund balance at three point two million with about forty-three and a half days. If you move to twenty-six, just to remind you, we did two columns. The left column is if we made no few, no further changes in twenty-six. The right column is if we make the changes that we have proposed to you thus far. So, I'm going to actually just stay to the right, but the left is there for your information. So, again, similar process, just much smaller details. So, starting in twenty-six with revenue, we're estimating two and a half on the formula with two thousand one hundred ninety-five students. So, just, just under four hundred thousand for our gen ed aid. Two hundred fifty thousand for the students that we estimate will be leaving us. SPED aid, again, is a combination of the cross-subsidy and the ASHA billing. And then the student support personnel aid is sixty-six thousand dollars. That's gonna be bumping up in twenty-six. Again, the caveat to that is that we would have to keep all of our social workers and our FTEs in order to be able to have that, that funding stream. So, on the expense side then, we're estimating in twenty-six that we'd have almost one point two million in salary and fringe costs. A new FMLA tax will be starting that, based on our current payroll, we're estimating is gonna be fifty-five thousand dollars. MVET expenses, we had estimated a four percent increase. Utility, we use three percent, and transportation, we use two percent. If you see on the expense side, the bottom, the very bottom is eight hundred seven thousand. That is for not shifts but reductions that we had identified. So, shifts were already accounted for up above in the salary and fringe number. So, with the right-hand side, again, we know there's more work to be done, but with what we've presented at this point, we would start twenty-six with three point two million in our unassigned general fund, end with two point eight six million, or thirty-seven point seven days. And then the very last page is going to look very similar. Again, left is if we did no further action in twenty-six. Right is if we took the changes as proposed. So, we're estimating two percent on the formula for three hundred twenty thousand. Again, twenty-five students less. Our SPED aid is similar for cross-subsidy and ASHA billing. And then in twenty-seven, we also have an EL cross-subsidy that picks up. So, that is based on our twenty-five EL expenditures. So, the expenses that are not covered by the revenue, then they pick up twenty-five percent of that in the cross-subsidy. So, we're estimating seventy-three thousand dollars in revenue generated there. Moving down to the expense side then, we have just under a million dollars in salary and fringe that we're estimating. And we use the same percentage increases for our estimates for MVET, transportation and utilities. So, four percent on MVET, three on utilities and two on transportation. So, using the information as we have it, we would start twenty-seven with two point eight six million and twenty-seven with one point seven million, or twenty-two days of operation. Are there any questions with the twenty-five budget as it's been presented?
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Going back to this one, which I'm pulling up the fiscal year twenty-five estimate one, that goes portrait way. The levy, general, OPEB, CTE lease, what's in the OPEB levy?
So, the OPEB levy is when we can levy for the benefits that we pay for our retirees.
Okay, all right, sounds good. And then for the MVET expense estimates, negative sixty thousand. So, like when they showed me our budget down there, they had a different number. So, is that just a case of like, they're just pulling from some, because they had like a hundred thousand, like a hundred, two thousand? So, is that just like... You know, I'm trying, you know what I mean? I know that sometimes you look at like slightly different categories to come up with a big chunk. You know what I mean? So, I'm just trying to figure that out.
Yeah, so when we did the MVET expense specifically, I had taken the latest twenty-four spreadsheet that we had, rolled it forward to twenty-five, took out the positions that they told us they weren't gonna provide for us anymore, and then increased it by four percent.
Okay.
So, at the point when we created this, we didn't have Yuki's twenty-five spreadsheet to go off of.
Perfect, okay. Well, not perfect, but answer. And then, okay, so then when you flip then to the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, so the MVET expense estimates, you said that was just the, it was going up fifty-one thousand. I'm all about MVET. What was that representing? You said four percent.
So, that's just four percent on the expenses that we estimated in twenty-five. So, assuming that they take off the positions that they told us they were going to, we use the twenty-four, the twenty-five numbers and they just did four percent for twenty-six.
Okay.
Similar with twenty-seven, then I built four percent on top of that for twenty-seven.
Okay. All righty. And then for the twenty-six, twenty-seven, when you update it the next time, just do the less aid for, just increase the number of students from twenty-five to however many it's supposed to be, which is just, you had twenty-five and it should probably be like thirty-nine or forty or whatever. If you look at how many there would actually be difference between the two years? Big deal, but you know, it all matters because those kids are worth like how much?
Eight thousand or five thousand or ten thousand?
Roughly ten, when you combine all the different categories.
So, all right, that's all I got.
Thank you, Megan, for helping us see this with more clarity and it's been very, very helpful. I appreciate it a lot. For those who are following at home, this is just some relatively easy way to kind of follow along with what, what we're facing without getting too far in the weeds. So, one good way of showing a district health is how much money do you have in savings? How long can you operate without any funding from any government source or any outside source? We worked really hard to get that. The amount of saved days up to around, you know, we're up north of forty-five days. That's, that's a great achievement. So, right now, with our declining enrollment, what we're doing is dipping into that savings and using some of that money, not all of it, but some of it every year to keep us going. And so, that's good because it's a bit of a rainy day financially and we've gotta do that. That's the right thing to do, but you can't do it forever. So, right now, we've got, we'll have forty-three point five days of reserves left at the end of twenty-four, twenty-five, I think is what I'm... My number is right, but I think that's right. The following year, with the current plan, will eat up five point eight days of that. And then, if we took no, no further action, which is not what we're proposing, but if we didn't, we would eat through another, an additional fifteen point seven days beyond that. So, within two years, we could rip through twenty-one and a half days of our savings. So, it goes very quickly. It just demonstrates, I think, for, you know, your average taxpayer who just wants to know how things are going, what kinds of problems that we're dealing with and how we're trying to solve them. Well, we're trying to solve them the best we can. But I'd just like to highlight that. If I were listening, that would be interesting to me.
I think that was a very great summary of our situation.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Other than I, I look forward to continue to work on this issue. All of us are, I know that. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Megan. Oh, why don't you just stay there then? Next item up, consider approval of a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of the district's general obligation bonds. This is a resolution. Hello.
Matt, you do all the talking.
Good evening, everyone. Great to be with you all. I know you all are used to seeing my colleague, Michael Izel, has been down and presented before as it relates to the bond issuance. He had another meeting that he'd already committed to tonight, asked me to step in in his place. So, great to be with you all. Some of you may remember adopting a similar resolution back on March eighteenth that basically set goals for the borrowing. That resolution was specific to the bonds being issued under the Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Revenue Program. What we're doing tonight is taking and adding the voter-approved portion of the bond issue into the financing, with the intent being to issue a single series of bonds comprised of the voter-approved portion as well as the LTFM. The reason for that is twofold. First, what we're seeing right now in the bond market is a larger appetite from investors for larger-sized transactions. That by including both of these together, we think we're gonna get higher demand from investors to purchase your bonds versus doing two smaller debt issuances. So, that's first. The second piece is right now we have an inverted yield curve with investment rates in the short term being advantageous. So, what we're seeing or with the current market anticipating is that the rate that you can invest your bond proceeds at is above what you're paying on the debt. The IRS says if you're an issuer of taxes on bonds, you have to pay that difference back of what you're earning above the bond yield. So, that being said, there's some certain, some certain rules that allow you to get around that. One is what's called a small issuer exemption, in which you issue fifteen million or less of debt in a calendar year, and then you can exceed the rate that you're paying on the bonds and keep those investment earnings. With that in mind, Barry looked at several scenarios in which we said, what, what does it look like if we spread this out over two to three years? Issue a fifteen million now, a fifteen million in two thousand twenty-five, with the intent being that you could maximize what you're earning on the bonds. The results surprised me, I'll be honest, but by doing a single debt issuance now and investing those proceeds over the course of your construction period, it's about a hundred thousand dollars better in investment earnings. So, that's the rationale of doing a single debt issuance versus the LTFM and the voter-approved. The resolution tonight basically sets goals for the borrowing, establishing a not-to-exceed borrowing amount of thirty-four million, two hundred ninety thousand, and a not-to-exceed true interest cost, which would be the equivalent to your home mortgage rate of five point two five percent. Assuming you all adopt the resolution tonight, Barry will work with district administration to move forward with securing a credit rating with the hope being to bring your bonds to the market on July tenth, at which you'll then come back as a board again and adopt what's called an awarding resolution, which basically says that you're signing off on the payment structure set forth, fixed rate for the life of the borrowing with anticipated closing of August thirteenth. So, that kind of gives you an idea. So that kind of gives you a, an idea of the timeline moving forward. Uh, July tenth, when we bring the bonds to the market, we'll be looking for signature on what's called a bond purchase agreement from a school board officer and superintendent or business manager, which is the informal approval of the financing until you all can come back at your July school board meeting and adopt that awarding resolution. So big picture, this resolution sets goals for the borrowing and basically is the first formal school board action to initiate the financing process. So without taking any questions you might have.
That was helpful, thank you.
You bet.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the resolution, um, further discussion?
Questions?
Yeah.
Just a clarification, please correct me if I'm wrong, but to the bond purchaser, there are Minnesota resident that interest that is not taxable for that.
Correct.
Are you fairly confident that the yield would be in the range, or is that medium-high levels, like the nice and conservative change between now and this?
The yield that you're paying on the bonds, interest cost of the school district. Yeah, so the five point two-five percent not-to-exceed rate is consistent with what was in the resolution adopted back in March. I can tell you, based on current market conditions, if we were to get you in the market today, that true interest cost would be closer to a four point one.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was getting at, okay, great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ken. I believe, I really am appreciative of your experience in this area, to be able to ask the right questions there, so.
Further discussion? Discussion, discussion. So we have a motion and a second for the resolution. Uh, the resolution, uh, that proceeds from, proceeds from the sale of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed thirty-four million, two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars will be used to fund classroom and facilities updates and renovations, indoor air quality improvements, and various deferred maintenance projects within Saint Peter Middle School. Uh, this is a resolution, so we need to go around the table. Ms. Rosback?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Stewie?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, everyone, have a great evening.
Thanks, Matt.
So we'll see you again in a month, or are you sending?
You can get one of us.
One of you, okay, surprise us. Well, thanks for being here tonight. Uh, item number five, consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between ISD five zero eight, Community and Family Education, and the City of Saint Peter. Hi.
Hello.
How are you, Tammy?
If you don't mind, at first, I'd like to just give you a little bit of a report of our work with the Recreation Department over the last year. Um, we have a really strong partnership with them, and this memorandum really outlines how we work together, so that we are not duplicating services, and we are maximizing our funds to serve the most people that we can. Excuse me. One of the ways that we do that is by providing funds to the Recreation Department for their exploration, recreation program, and this program operates in local parks on a regular basis and is free of charge to all of the participants. Last summer's attendance for this program was two thousand sixty-four children, and our funds help defray some of the costs of staffing and supplies for that. The Volunteer in the Park Program is another one that we help support. This program fosters leadership skills with students, and last summer there were fifty-seven children that participated in the program. We also provide funds to support after-school youth enrichment programs, and these help to reduce some of the costs that go directly to the participant. Things like fencing, flag football, traveling volleyball, and babysitter training. And during the previous school year, there were five hundred and fifty-eight students that participated in those activities. Um, this organization, as you know, does a great job, and we are lucky to have them. It's a great partnership that we have had for a long time, and, um, both of our programs, we get along well with each other. Um, I think this memorandum of understanding is a really good working document between the two of us. Um, if you will take a moment to look over that. There are two changes to this from previous years. The first change is in section one, letter F, and that is talking about co-publishing a seasonal brochure. If Community and Family Education moves out of the community center, we will probably negotiate whether we will publish a common brochure or not. Uh, so we wanted to list that in this memorandum. And then also, the very last section, we've added an amendments. And this really is a way for either of us to make changes to the document that are mutually agreed upon by both parties, and of course, our supervisors as well, and our boards. Other than that, all of the information remains the same, the funding is the same as in previous years as well. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the memorandum of understanding.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries, we approve the memorandum of understanding.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Item six, consider approval of membership in the Minnesota School Boards Association for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Grunseth?
This is an annual item that comes before you each year at this time, uh, to continue your membership with MSBA. I believe just about every district in the state is a member of MSBA. They provide financial services, advice, like how to recess a meeting, um, policy advice, um, and the annual fee is ten thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Based on size, does that number cost? I'm just curious, I'm not questioning it.
Um, I think there's a few things in here. We do pay for specific, specific services, like board book.
Right.
And, uh, policy, um, subscription, and then there is a per-student
Yeah, okay.
factor of that as well.
Just curious.
I think it's said on here, but.
Average daily membership of students here.
That's what it's from, okay, thank you.
I move we approve our membership in MSBA for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? It's great organization.
For all of us here.
Yeah, very helpful.
The services provided are really good.
Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Charlie, I want to recuse myself, is that the correct term?
Sure. Because of connections to MSBA.
Yeah, because being a former employee.
Yeah, absolutely. Motion still carries.
Yeah.
We have renewed our membership with MSBA, thank you. Item seven, consider approval of membership in the Minnesota State High School League for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Mr. Grunseth?
Yes, this was, um, it's another annual membership for us. There was a change last year, uh, that no, actually no longer required a board action before doing this, and now it is an electronic process that comes to, to me, and Shay and I fill out the names, and then I send it, and then the clerk receives it, and then it goes, um, back to the state. But I still wanted to bring it before the board as a recognition that we are, um, doing our membership with Minnesota State High School League, which leads all of our activities and, uh, state tournaments and all of that.
Ever, in watching that video that we were supposed to watch, um, it said two things there that I thought were interesting. One, it said that the fees were going down, which I was like, oh, yay. And then it said that, and we're going to do you this great service, that we're going to include ninth graders in part of our league. Which then I was like, oh, well, then I'm sure our fees will go back up, right?
This is based on per student.
Yeah.
Sorry for everybody who's watching online in that eye roll, but, um, when is that ninth grade thing? I mean, they didn't really say, it was all these, you know, big grand statements, but nothing like specific in our little video we watched.
I don't have any specific information on that, do you?
I was wondering if I misunderstood that, but.
No, the, the way I understood the ninth grade deal was that that would have to be approved by the school districts in a vote, so.
Yeah.
It'll be a while, because they'll have to get everything out of this whole thing.
I just was thinking, I was like, oh, okay.
Does make sense, though, with the point of the comprehensive, um, insurance that's available.
So when does that actually come into play, I wonder? You know, that comprehensive insurance, so your kid falls down and sprains an ankle. I never really have heard about the state high school league coming in and really helping you out with that.
It wouldn't probably for that, but if it, you have a concussion, it's catastrophic insurance.
Interesting.
This is a resolution, by the way. It requires a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the resolution to join the, once again, Minnesota State High School League.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote, this is a resolution, we will go around the table. Ms. Rosback?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Stewie?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Cal?
Aye.
Mr. Dixon? Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Resolution has passed, thank you. Item number eight, consider approval of memorandum of understanding with paraeducators. Mr. Grunseth?
Yes, this is an MOU that was written after the negotiations process with para professionals. Uh, the new language in the para professional educator bargaining unit, um, says when we hire para professionals who have experience in other districts, that they can be placed on the salary scale, uh, that would reflect the experience that they have in another district. We do have a handful of employees who were hired before this language, who did come to us from other districts, who did not have their experience recognized. So, um, technically, they could quit and get rehired, and then they would get recognized for that experience, and that didn't seem equitable or fair for employees. And so we came to this MOU that would say that para professionals who came to us, with experience, would have an adjustment starting July one. So this would allow those, I believe there's four or five employees who have prior para experience or have experience with us and then left and then came back and didn't have that experience recognized, um, we'll see, uh, an adjustment to their placement on the scale. And the, um, para professional unit has agreed to this, and, uh, it comes to you for further approval.
I'm guessing that went to the H R group too?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move that resolution? That was a resolution, right? Or no, it's a memorandum, okay, make a motion.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I just wanted to mention, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We talked about it during the negotiation process, that recognizing this would be, um, an MOU and not written directly into the contract language.
I'd like to propose that we add a statement to this indicating that in the way there's a precedent setting in action. That we're doing something after the fact in this instance, but we're not establishing a precedent that in future negotiations, if something changes, that those benefits don't go back.
Good catch.
So not establishing a future precedent, or not a precedent.
It can't be considered past practice?
That's, yeah. Basically, that's what it's designed to do then.
Not a precedent setting.
One-time occurrence, whatever. Thanks, I was searching for that.
Even though that's right, but, yeah.
Not a precedent setting. Good catch. So I would have that as a third bullet point.
Yeah.
And then... So you could pass it as amended, it would go back to them.
Mm-hmm.
If they didn't agree to it, it would come back to us, but I would think that they would not have a problem with that.
So we would need to make an amendment to our motion to now approve the amended copy of the MOU?
So you're going to make a friendly amendment? I've heard that before. As opposed to the non-friendly ones?
It's... Friendly amendment, I think, is when the maker of the motion agrees or something, but.
I... You're not amending the motion, you're amending the document. The document.
Yeah, I'd like to propose amendment to the document, so. So I guess we would, we would change the motion to say in favor of this as the proposed amendment.
So you are making a friendly amendment to my motion, just a minute pill.
Okay. It'll make you happy.
So we have a motion to consider the amended?
Amendment.
We should probably vote on the, on the proposed amendment, and then say, then we'll vote on the document, saying that we approve it as we amended it, with the understanding that they still have to ratify it.
Okay, so we still have a motion and a second, the original motion?
But we have to vote on the amendment first.
So we have a motion for the amendment?
Right.
Do we have a second for that? Did we have a second? Second, we have a motion, a second for the amended document. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The document is amended. Now we're back to our original motion, which is to approve the memorandum of understanding as it is now written. We had a motion and a second on that, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any further discussion? So just to recap, we have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding as it has been amended, to include the new language about non-precedence setting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We have approved the amended memorandum of understanding with paraeducators. Next up, consider the continuation of a joint agreement with M-VET to provide food service. Mr. Grunseth and Ms. Prapke, Mr. Grunseth only.
Yes, uh, this is an ongoing, um, relationship we have with M-VET, that we provide their food service, we, um, do the billing, and then they pay us for the services rendered, so this is an annual agreement that's just continuing.
Do rates for this fluctuate over time, or is that something that we would see? Or is it based upon, like, I don't, I don't, I don't know how it's done that.
And now it's with free meals for all, it's all reimbursement from the state at a given rate, and so that's the rate that it's based on.
Okay.
They get included in our student home when we get the student meals that we give reimbursed, um, and then we use that money to cover the expenses. They don't pay us anything additional specifically for food service, except for this small five thousand dollars type in for the lunch fee. Other than that, it's, it's, um, their students are just considered all of them, they have to receive.
Thank you for that clarification.
Well, it's something we can think about, though, because if our food services has more expenses than revenue. Right?
Certainly we could charge a mileage, too, to, 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 to over.
I mean, I don't know how many kids that is, but.
Maybe we could just... Maybe we could just reduction from MVN, our fee service.
Yeah, we have to entertain a motion.
I move that we continue the joint agreement with MVN for food service.
Oh, second.
Motion and a second, further discussion? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none will proceed to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item ten, consider a resolution to approve the yearly governmental lease, Ms. Gracia.
Yes, so this is something we've been doing annually for quite some time. We have two leases that we have, one is for student technology for the one-to-one initiative, and one is for staff technology and larger purchases, like some digital display screens. So we had sent letters to First National, Hometown and Pioneer, we heard back from First National and Hometown. As you can see, the results here, on the four-year, which is the student technology, it was six point one for First National and six point two for Hometown, and then the five-year rate was the same for both at six point two-five. Our recommendation is that you will authorize the leases with First National Bank, since the rate of six point one that we will have to pay them is less.
I'll move the resolution.
Second. Motion and a second. On the resolution, any further discussion, questions? Discussion, discussion.
So we would have nine that we're paying on, because we do a four and five-year lease every year. I would say it has increased over time, just as technology has increased. I mean, the number of purchases that we buy is pretty similar from year to year, but...
Any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote, this is a resolution. We'll go around the table, Ms. Rossback.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Stewie.
Aye.
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 Mr. Dixon.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution carries. Thank you. Item number eleven, consider a resolution to increase community education revenue due to population growth. Mr. Gronseth.
This is another thing, we did this last year as well. As the population of our, of the district, not Saint Peter, but everyone who lives in the district, is that correct? We can increase our communication levy, because that is based on total population, and so our population has increased to sixteen thousand three hundred and forty-nine, up from fifteen thousand four hundred and twelve. And so this, with this resolution, we can update our population and therefore our levy.
Do you want to add anything?
You've covered everything.
All right.
I'll make a motion to move the resolution.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
This seems to me to be... Well, what are you doing, is you're certifying that the, what the state demographer told you was the population, is the population to the state demographer's?
That's correct.
Seems crazy, right? What would happen, tell him that what he told us was right.
And this one, we get a benefit from the growth of the community.
Well, sure, overall, it's not necessarily bringing more students.
No, no, no more students.
So that's always a problem.
Yeah.
But it does get the community advantage.
It does, it does, it has overall benefits.
And those are more students. For the community.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So we have a motion and a second for the resolution, any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote, this is the resolution, so we will go around the table, Ms. Rossback.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Stewie.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Cowell.
Aye.
Mr. Dixon.
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, resolution carries. Item number twelve, consider approval of policy manual review. We have a number, a number of them.
The first three, policies six oh three, six sixteen, six twenty, were reviewed last month for a first reading. When the policy committee met, there was no further changes recommended or indicated, and so those are here for a second reading. And... Yeah, I'm, this very easily could have been two separate action items, and for some reason I listed them on one piece. So if you wanted to break this during the discussion into action on second reading, and then the other ones are acceptance in one reading, so they're all being passed in this. So in the minutes that you received from the policy committee, I, I heard that folks wanted a little more description on each of those, so if you had an opportunity to look at those minutes that were sent out, each item does have a description of what that change was, or if there was no change. So if it was just a grammatical correction, or one of the things they're doing in all of the policies is they're going from M-I-N-N-S-D-A-T, Minstat, to writing out Minnesota statute, and so all of them have that. So if it's just legal reference change, that's likely what it was, or there was expansion of the abbreviations that they used within those statutes, and then sometimes there's grammatical corrections, and they truly are just changing a word or a comma. And if there was minor language changes to the titles of statutory references, they might have just changed a word or two of that statute, or sometimes they had listed a subdivision of a statute, and they brought it back up to the actual title of the statute, but it's still the same, they're referencing the same thing, just differently.
So basically what we discussed, and we did a kind of a lengthy discussion of this at the policy committee meeting, is the no change or no substantive change, basically required is what, what Superintendent Gronseth was referring to, something that's just a filling out of a word, or, or something that does not change the content of the policy. And those are the ones that we're generally gonna send to you as the one reading approval, because there's, there's not anything that's really affecting the policy in that, in that particular item. But when we send you to the, send them to you as a second reading, what you're getting are all of the changes that we have suggested, including just the ones that MSBA is, is making according to the legislative requirements and so on, that's in there. And then also any, any language changes that we made as a group that are suggested for, to address our school district individually. So they're all in that, in this packet here, these are the red line, blue line, red, red words and blue words that were added. So the color coding is important, if you have a black and white printer, you're gonna be in trouble, but they're, they're there for you to read through. And we will, we will continue to work on a way to make this more user-friendly as we go through the, the next few policies.
So did, I understand correctly now that the ones that aren't in the first three have the minor changes? And one of those changes was to change the way statutes are referenced?
Spelled out and so on.
So you didn't make those same changes in the top three, then?
Oh, those were made as well as.
So how about when all the legal references there are all still Minnesota stat, Minstat, and Minrule?
Okay, yeah, that hasn't been...
So all that needs to be...
That, that will be done in the, in the, in the version that goes in our policy.
Okay. But I was gonna say, 'cause you made all those other substantive changes, but you didn't make the simple ones that you made in the other one. And then the other question I have is, there's references to the World Best Workforce. Have they officially changed that now? The legislature has, but, but MSBA hasn't yet?
Right, and MDE is still working on it.
Oh, okay.
So, but that will be...
So we'll be looking at this again, but it'll probably be a one reading.
Yeah. Going from... Oh, gosh, I can't remember now.
It's a test.
It's a new acronym.
C-C-R, but it's not college and career readiness, it is civic and...
C-A-C-R, yeah.
Civic and community. What's the last letter?
R?
R. Civic and community readiness, or something like that?
Something like that, yeah. Just rolls off the tongue.
Or civic and college readiness?
No.
I remember reading it, but I can't remember what it is either.
I have a couple of questions. On policy six twenty, on the credit for learning, on the page one twelve, in the middle of page where it's section A and number two, where it says credits and grades awarded from another school, public, and then B U's complete honor roll has earned at least, and it says insert number of credits, what is the number of credits? Is it a à la carte, and you can, students can kind of pick or choose, or?
It depends on your card script, I bet.
Gotcha, took me a minute. I missed where to...
I think, does that also refer down to B, under B, the three credits?
It may, but...
I believe it was, good catch.
Oh, here we go again.
I know.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Where are you pushing?
On six twenty, one page, one twelve.
Huh, we did, we did the B, under capital B, small b? No?
I don't know how we missed this.
And then, and then I do like, in the policy committee minutes, I'm, I like that summary, that's very, very helpful. I think it would be very helpful for us to put that summary with the board minutes. Therefore, it would be part of the public record, and when people are looking at the minutes, the public, they are able to see then what the changes are, and it would just kind of keep everything together. Instead of having to be like, kind of like, okay, now I gotta pull up my minutes, kind of go back to kind of put that all together. It's all done, so it'd just be a matter of, and we used to have that as part of the minutes, I think that might be helpful. But looking at the minutes from June eleventh, I want to know what happened to policy seven fourteen and eight oh six, because we taught, you talked about them in the minutes, but then the fund balances and the crisis management plan, was that coming for a first reading?
Crisis plan was when we talked to John.
Went back to, yeah, the crisis management plan went back to the committee.
Yeah.
Crisis management committee.
Seven fourteen, you're correct, is in the minutes and didn't get included in the packet, and should have.
However, what we did, we did discuss that.
Yes.
And we had, made sure that that last line was added back into the policy that's on our policy manual.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
That last line means the annual review, the review of the fund balance.
When I looked online, it was actually already there.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's, we did that right away. But we did discuss and make sure that that was the story of that line in seven fourteen.
So we need to add those to the July?
Yeah, I think, we probably just need to add policy seven fourteen and eight oh six to the July meeting.
Okay, now, with eight oh, eight oh six, we sent, we didn't do any action on it, we sent...
We started the discussion.
Okay, well, seven fourteen.
Seven fourteen will be the one we can put in July. Eight oh six, one, yeah.
Did they do like all their big dump of, or is it just because the, their dump of changes in June? Or is it just because the legislative just got out, because that's like a lot of changes?
Oh, the, so last month we started going through the, you know how we go through a third of them, or a third of them a year?
Yeah.
So we did the one hundreds, we did the two hundreds.
Not all.
So this is kind of...
The two hundreds, gotcha.
Part of the process of us going through them is looking at the MSBA model policies to see if they had made any updates since the last time we adopted it. And so that's one of the pieces that we do. So as these come through, there might be changes that, you know, small changes that they've recommended since we adopted them three years ago. So... As we work our way through.
And if it was like a big change, so they might make a change, I'm saying this out loud to myself. So they might make a change that could just be something that's just like, a small change that doesn't really like change the meaning of the policy, and then that would just kind of like hang out there.
Yeah.
And, or if it's something that's like, this is a change, and it changes how the policy actually functions, then you would get like a notice of that, and then it would be like, we have to make, we'll change on that, we need to take action on that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get that list probably August or September, depending on when MDE interprets what the statute changes are, and then MSBA will send out, here are all the policies that have changes due to legislative change.
Okay.
And that's, we'll work through those and continue working on the, the third that we're supposed to cover, and...
Gotcha.
It's just a never-ending cycle.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question, or I make the last, I don't believe I have a motion.
We do not have a motion. I move to approve the policy.
Recommendations?
Yes, recommendations in total, barring policy two fourteen, which will be...
Seven fourteen.
Seven fourteen, sorry. Which is not on the agenda. Which is not even on the agenda, but I just wanted to make sure... We talked about it. We're all on the same page. We talked about it in the meeting, and it's in the meeting agenda.
Yeah.
But if it's not here, we don't make a decision on anything that's not on this agenda.
That is correct.
Yes.
Just all...
Confirm that.
For a second, that bullshit, don't ask me to repeat it.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Could, could we hold policy six twenty, the credit for learning, until we get that, all the four A two number?
So we're pulling seven twenty, six twenty out?
Yeah.
We'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
But it's not my amendment, it's not my motion, it's...
Who made the motion?
Drew.
Make it friendly.
Yeah, it's a friendly amendment.
Really is.
We proved it friendly, and it's a friendly there.
It's not changing the...
Right. So we have a motion and a second to approve policies six oh three, six sixteen, and then all of the policies in the two hundreds listed below. Any discussion?
Two points, one, good job, I, policy seven fourteen, I did not catch that so well, but I do have a question. Mrs. Legelinger with Field Biology.
She's gonna...
On page one oh five, paragraph B, right at the top of the thirty-two. The only, the only question I have is I appreciate the clearness and rigor that you require for students that enroll as a high school freshman to senior, that there is credits B, which is in the rigor comparable to what we have in similar course description. Paragraph D here, it's to, if you do not have a course that's comparable, you'll feel it's still just a high school graduation credit. And no credit without the course that you're providing. So this, I mean, this is probably kind of a better of it. Say a student moved in from another area and, and appropriately credited sufficiently, they've taken Latin five, for example, or something we have nothing to compare to. They would get no credit for that, or what do you think?
They get credit for that. They would get, if it's a Minnesota public high school that they have received that credit already from, when they, when they come to us, they, they do receive that credit.
Okay, something is true, like that maybe in online
Yeah.
How do you document that online programs?
I don't believe they look any different on a student's transcript, other than the school name. I, I don't believe there's a different code or anything on that transcript.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We've approved six oh three, six sixteen, and then all the listed two hundreds. Thank you. Informational items. We have reports, building principles.
Well, I told my principal friends, this is really going to be my night to shine, so just sit back. Just kidding. Um, summer has already, June is actually really busy in our schools. We started the first week off on Tuesday, the week after school was out with curriculum writing. We had social studies, science, math, and world language in their second year. So those, the other three, you can expect, you can expect some asks for curriculum next spring. That being said, there are two new courses, the MSU history course that we are starting this year. And, and that ask will be for the MSU texts. That will be coming to you next month. But I'm happy to have this opportunity to tell you about it now, because I will be overseas when you all are meeting in July. So hopefully, this explanation is enough. And also, science, there's a new MDE is, is requiring earth and space in ninth grade. And so, there will be some material asks for that. Not an entire curriculum. The science department is going to go through the year to determine if they need a, a full text set, or if they can use materials that, that they gather themselves. So that's always a busy and interesting week with our, with our staff. And, and the science, actually, this spring, they will finally be implementing the MCA fours. These were two thousand and nineteen standards that are finally now required for full implementation in twenty-four, twenty-five. It always makes complete sense, doesn't it? Um, summer school started at the high school last week. We're running three sessions a day, two in the morning and one in the afternoon. So kids are happily attending those courses, and that's been going really smoothly. And obviously, the gym end is very busy with weight training and, and various camps. The other buildings start their targeted summer services in July. I am not first, I'm not certain on what date that is. I know that Etive started early childhood summer school this morning. I was trying to have a conversation, a phone conversation with her, and the first day of anything with those littles is, I think, a little bit frantic. So she was very busy. And the big news, today was Doreen's last Monday. She's always our, our Monday countdown person, and she alerted us that today was her last Monday.
We'll miss her.
That's everything. Moment of silence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, yeah, as you heard from, and that's a comprehensive report. Summer is in full swing. There were littles running around the hall. There may have been some screaming. But it was a good day by the children, not the adults. I just wanted to Students are involved with summer programming, the maintenance team. If you've been in, near the district office, they started that wing doing their deep summer cleaning. So they have scrubbers out. And sometimes you'll see tape across that says wet wax. So things are starting to look good already. And then during the summer, there's also a lot of different activities. We heard from Tammy tonight, done in concert with the city's rec and leader department. So there's all kinds of things going on. It's not too late to sign up. I also just want to get a shout out to our students to read, read, read over the summer. It's the best way to keep learning. Public library is a great, great place to find some books. And they also have a lot of activities going on this summer. One more reminder, that Juneteenth is now a state holiday, June nineteenth, and that is on Wednesday. And so, the district will be closed for that holiday. And that is it for me.
Board members around the table. Ms. Rasmussen.
Just happy summer to our staff and our students. And I just wanted to say I thoroughly enjoyed my first high school graduation as a board member. It was wonderful. It's always a great night. Congratulations to our graduates.
Mr. Russell.
Uh, Mr. Brownson, thank you for calling out the library for a great place to spend the summer for kids and adults. I've been all the friends of the library for a number of years, and the library is phenomenal resource. So please, use it.
Um, a couple of things. First off, I'm super sad Mrs. Elke isn't here tonight. I feel like she timed that, so we weren't able to like, you know, give her a proper send off. But I don't know how many years she was here, but
Ten.
Ten years. Super, super sad to, well, excited for her, right? Because she's entering the stage of retirement. So I'm happy for her. And the other thing was, is on graduation night, I had the opportunity to help at the all night graduation party. And with all my kids that have gone through, I've never done that before. And it was a really, really cool event. And just hats off to the parents that planned that, because it's done very well. And I was very surprised at like the energy of the kids coming in, that they, it wasn't like, oh, yeah, we're here. Like, they were super, super excited to be there. And they had a lot of cool stuff planned, and it was just fun to see. So just hats off to those parents that planned that event, because they're there till, like, I went home at midnight, because that's enough for me. But they all, you know, stuck around till like two o'clock. So, and that's fun, because I think graduation is a very emotional time. And so, instead of just like going home, it's just one more step for them to be able to kind of be together for the night. So, anyway, so it's fun. That's all I have.
Well, Tracy, the last one I worked at went till six in the morning.
Well
Fake your lucky stars.
They probably wrote the agenda on the whiteboard, or on the blackboard too, so.
I would just, good one. It certainly wasn't on Facebook.
It was not.
I'd like to congratulate all the spring activities, state participants. I won't attempt to list them all, but we had some very successful seasons. Some, I think at least one state record in the track. So that was great. And congratulate your son for making
Yeah, great tennis season. I think Coach Roth has said, oh, I'm going to get this wrong, but I hope not. I think it's been like seventeen years straight, he's taken athletes to the state tournament in tennis.
Wow, that's great.
I hope that's right. But I just said
It's in the record.
So that's pretty, that's pretty cool. Yeah, congratulations to Doreen Elke, her retirement. She's a great asset to the community and a great person to be itself. Well loved. We'll miss her.
And on the off chance that there are any listening, I'd like to congratulate all the parents of the graduates from this year. They may have surfaced for air by this point in time. And congratulations on the successes of your kids. That's it.
Uh, we've got some upcoming meetings. The school board, the business committee, policy committee, and education committee all meet in early July before we're back here for the regular board meeting on Monday, July fifteenth, six thirty P M in this room.
And we're reconvening, right?
Um, yeah.
Would entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.